Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atomo City Council Meeting. If everybody'd rise, we're going to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull? Councilmember Pope?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe? Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre? Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull? Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
The next item is to approve tonight's City Council agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
The next item is the City Administrator's Report to the Council and Citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, the City Administrator.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Tonight, we have Laura Correll with Mita Tamwa, and she is here to provide a quarterly update for the council and the public. So I'll invite Laura to come up to the mic, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In front of you, you have a whole stack of wonderful goodies that are yours for the taking. In front of you are our three most popular visitor guides that we have in our office. This is the first year that we have done those completely in-house, so I'd like to publicly thank our graphic designer, Olson Miller, for his work on those. We were originally doing them out of state, and we decided it was time that we brought them all in-house. Everything was printed and designed locally, and we are very proud of that fact that as these go out, those will be in the hands of people who will know that they were made here. The packet that you have tonight is just a few of the things that I want to talk about, and then if you have any questions for me. We are completely funded by the hotel motel tax with a contribution from Wapalo County and any grant money that we receive. So as you look at the second page, the state of Iowa collects the hotel motel tax. It's that extra percentage at the bottom of your hotel bill that people usually just accept as something that they're going to do for the communities that they're staying in. Those funds are released to the cities and counties quarterly. We receive them here in the city of Atomoa. Those come six months, six weeks after each quarter. So we are now just announced our April-through-June dispersment. So for fiscal year 2022-23, we received a combined $191,000 from the hotel motel tax and that Wapalo County contribution. This is several thousand dollars higher than what we had budgeted for the year. So that means what we're doing is working, that the marketing plans that we have in place are beyond and above what we had planned on. So if you want to do a cheer, I'm okay with that. So that means that the money that was above what we budgeted automatically goes back into the marketing budget for us for the year coming up. So that difference means we can go to a lot of different places, a lot of different marketing channels that we haven't done in the past, and we'll talk about some of those in a minute that I'm really excited about. The next page kind of breaks down Mita Tamwa's partners, the people that we work with on a constant basis. The left-hand column are the representing organizations of our board. So on our board, we have members from the city of Atomoa, Wapalo County, Legacy Foundation, JBS Bridgeview Center, the Atomo Community Schools, American, the American Gothic House, Wapalo County Conservation, GoKip, and some of our local businesses and restaurants. So we invite people to join us if they have any connection to the tourism industry. So we're talking about hotels, restaurants, shopping, but then also all of the organizations that we're able to help along the way. We want them to be as close partners as we possibly can so that we can reach the community and find out what it is that they need from us to be able to promote them. The right-hand column are just a handful of the other organizations that we promote on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. The Iowa Heartland History Connection, the County Museum. We just helped get cobblestone hotels and suites, got them opened up last night, so we're super excited to have them right there. The Antique Airplane Association is one of our closest partners when they do their fly-in every Labor Day weekend. We're a sponsor for that, plus we help promote the museum throughout the year. And then Mayflower Tour is a new one that we're adding to the list this year. We just secured a Chicago Mystery Trip Tour that's going to bring in six different mystery trips from Chicago. They're going to put them on a bus in Chicago, not tell them where they're going, and they're going to pull up in Atomoa. And we have a whole itinerary, they're going to stay at the cobblestone. We have museum visits and walking tours. So 360 hotel rooms right off the bat. This is a huge win for me personally because we were able to talk them into two nights, a three-day, two-night stay instead of just a one night. They were planning on just leaving the next day. And I actually sent him the visitor guide that you have in your hand, and he immediately emailed me and said, "We're going to stay for two days. Do you have an itinerary?" I said, "Yes, I do," and I sent it back. So that group and the other ones that are in that list there are ones that we intend to keep working with as we continue to have the marketing dollars that we do have. And then the bottom half of that list are some of the groups and organizations that we are either on their board, we're a member of the committee, or we actively promote them as part of our sponsorship of them. I feel like I should do one of those, turn the page. So what I really wanted to talk to you tonight is the marketing channels that we're using this fiscal year that we haven't used before. We have always been very conservative with our money because we wanted to make sure that we could serve, that we could serve the community to the best of our ability. So we had quite a bit of money saved up from these extra hotel motel tax dispersments. So we channeled that as all marketing funding. The more that I put into marketing, the more confident I am that more people are going to see it, and the more people will follow through. So we are partners with the Iowa Travel Industry Partners. We're now going to be in national small meeting market and sports tourism trade shows in the next few months. They have information from us that they will put out to these groups, sports teams, and it's being held in Florida this year. They will be there with one sheets from us about the sports facilities that we have available and that will become available. And the same with the small meeting marketing. With the number of hotel rooms that we have available on every given weekend, we are somewhat still limited to how big of a group we can bring in. If they're looking specifically for 1,000 to 2,000 hotel rooms, which is what a lot of these groups want, we can't do it. We don't have them, we would have to do it elsewhere. So being able to target the size that we want is super important, and they're going to do all of that for us. We gave them all the information, and they're going to act on our behalf at those trade shows. We're also members of the Central Iowa Tourism Region, the Midwest Travel Network, which was just here with several of their travel bloggers that have posted all over social media about the amazing trip that they had here just a few weeks ago. The last time we did one of these, we were seeing their posts and their blogs three, four years down the road. They were still being used. We're also doing marketing this year. We've expanded out to KTVO and KYOU. We're doing several projects with them in the upcoming weeks as well as participating in advertising and some live things with Atomo Radio. The Travel Iowa section that's on the other side of the page is what I'm most excited to share with you tonight. So Travel Iowa is now part of Iowa Economic Development, and they have been able to, through that monetary partnership, have been able to expand what they're able to give to the members of Travel Iowa's far-reaching. So we were able this year to get in on their co-op program. They are able to get marketing channels at discounted rates than what would be offered to anybody else. Then they are able to divide those up between a certain number of DMOs. So we get the discount of the discount. This year, just this fiscal year, this list on the right, sponsored content on the Travel Iowa website, which is in the millions of hits every year. We will have dedicated email and email ads. We've never done those before. So when they send out to their email list, it will be all our content in those emails. We will also have dedicated social media. There will be posts to the Travel Iowa Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and YouTube that will be dedicated to Atomoa and Wapalo County. We're also now available, this is the first year we've been able to do streaming ads. So any of the channels that you stream from, we will have access to those with Atomo and Wapalo County ads. We'll also be in Midwest Living and South Dakota Living. The whole purpose of us marketing and advertising is to be able to get people from outside of Iowa to come in and see who we are. So the more we are in these publications that are outside of us is phenomenal. People who never thought about us, never even knew we were here, are going to see who we really are. We also have another influencer who will be coming the first of the summer, May, June, somewhere in there. When Travel Iowa sends these influencers, we are able to give them an itinerary, and they go through and experience it, just like a tourist would coming in. They post on all of their social media channels, and then they post on Travel Iowa. So we're able to cross-promote in all these different ways. The next one is the one I am beyond excited about. We were able to get a digital billboard in Kansas City on the interstate facing south. So anybody who's traveling north on the interstate towards Iowa will be able to see our... I'm not going to tell you what it is yet. I'll tell you when we get it up, because it's fun. About getting one of your bucket list items crossed off, and then it's only four hours away. We're also going to be advertising on the Tiny Beans app. So anybody who has a family and small children will have ads on that app as they communicate with their families. The small visitor guide that you have in front of you. You have the big one with the bridge on the front, and you have the smaller one with Main Street on the front. That smaller one is part of this last marketing piece, our traveliowa.com leads. Anybody who goes onto Travel Iowa's website has the opportunity to sign up for marketing material from other communities. We have purchased one of those leads. So if you go to Travel Iowa, Atomoa is one of the cities that you can choose to get information from. So anybody who clicks on that or clicks on "all marketing," we get their mailing addresses. So we are able to put one of those smaller guides into a business envelope and send it off directly to their mailboxes. We are excited to be able to have that information because those are people that we never would have reached. So one more and one more and one more. You put all these layers of marketing together, and we can't wait to see what this year is going to bring. The next page of your packet, I'll let you study it on your own, but just a little bit of information. We have, again through Travel Iowa, we have a rivalist dashboard, which is very much like what the city has for tracking. Ours measures anybody who comes into Atomoa and into Wapalo County. If they stay here longer than two hours, it tracks their cell phone data. Totally Big Brother, I get it. We're able to tell from that where they came from, so we know exactly where to market. So if you look at that green chart on the upper left-hand corner, those are the top destinations that people are coming from to visit Atomoa. The next one over breaks it down so you can see which months have the most visitors in them. And then it breaks it down by day of the week, and then by how long they stayed. That length of stay bar is where our goals come from for the year. So for example, for this year, we're taking 2% off of the day trips and putting it on to the one-night stays. That's our goal for this fiscal year, is to be able to... Obviously, because we're funded by the hotel motel tax, the more people who are staying here and making an economic impact, the better. So by us changing those two numbers, we can see a substantial economic impact growth just from those people. And then finally, to answer the question that I know you're asking, how can you help? And that's super easy. We are not into vanity metrics when we look at our social media. I would rather have 10,000 people who actively interact with us than to have a million followers who don't do anything. The QR code that's in the middle of that page, if you use that on your phone, it'll take you directly to mitatamwa.org. And from there, you can find all of our social media links. We would love for you to come join us as we talk about all the things that we're doing for the community. And you can sign up for the events email that we send out every month so nobody can ever tell you that there's nothing happening in Atomoa, because it's not true. It also has a place that if your group or organization is hosting an event, you can submit it as well. I can't promote what I don't know about. So the more help we get with information, the more information your information center can put out. And then at the end is how you can get in touch with us. Do you have any questions for me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. No, first I just want to say thank you to you and Olson for all that you all are doing. And for those watching and those in the audience, again, that's mitatamwa.org. Also, if you follow them on Facebook, they do a very great job of talking about what's going on during the week, too. So if you're having guests come into town, you know, share that so people all over can know what's going on, too. But if, again, as Laura said, if you don't know what's going on in Atomoa, then you're not following because they will tell you everything that's going on in Atomoa and surrounding areas. We do our best. Yeah, so thank you.
I'd also like to express my appreciation for everything that Mita Tamwa does, and as I told you before, your enthusiasm for our city is extremely infectious.
It's my pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from any of the other council members? Well, thank you for your report.
Thanks so much.
Phil, I'll turn it back to you. Do you have any other items to go over?
Not tonight, no, thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is where I ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any of our agenda items that are on our agenda tonight. We don't have any slips up here, but I'll go ahead and ask, does anybody want to speak on any agenda item tonight? If not, we'll go ahead and move into public hearings. We've got two public hearings tonight.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2023 Greater Atomo Park Soccer Complex project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to Gene Raci.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attach our plans, specifications, and the form of contract for the construction of three high-quality soccer fields in Greater Atomo Park. The fields will be constructed between the dog park and the adult softball fields. The cost estimate for this project is $2.7 million. Funding will be provided by the Atomo Regional Legacy Foundation. This project is part of the Atomo Park Master Plan, and this project was approved by the Atomo Parks Advisory Board at their meeting on September 12, 2023. One correction, JBS has not donated any funding for this project.
Do you anticipate they're going to?
I can't comment on that right now.
Okay.
I just don't know.
Does council have any questions they'd like to ask of Gene? If not, does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to say since it's a public hearing? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry, Mayor, I just want to make a comment to just thanking the Legacy Foundation for their partnership and work to continue to grow our community, especially with a project like this. As we probably have all seen, when you drive by the soccer fields on Sunday, they're busy, and this will just be another added amenity to our community that's much needed, will be well-used, and will just continue to grow our community. So again, I just want to thank them for their partnership and their willingness, again, to help grow and better our community.
Thank you.
The only question I wanted to ask was, how soon is it going to get started?
As of right now, we plan for the project to start on December 1st. They can do some site preparation work this fall and this winter, and then work throughout next summer.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? If not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Resolution number 144, 2023, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the 2023 Greater Atomo Park Soccer Complex project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 144, 2023.
Move the recommendations presented.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Asbestos Abatement City Hall, Atomoa, Iowa project.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to Phil Bergmeyer, our interim Public Works Director.
Thank you. This is the public hearing to approve the plans and specs for, to abate asbestos throughout City Hall. This is necessary in order to proceed with the City Hall improvement project that we have coming up later in the agenda. There's asbestos-containing tile and drywall throughout City Hall. Also, pipe insulation that we have to abate. Answer any questions you guys have about the project.
Council have any questions, comments?
What's the schedule going to look like for moving around any staff during the remediation process?
It depends on what the contractor's schedule is when he wants to start the renovation project. I have in the plans and specs for the asbestos contractor to start on October 23rd. So it's going to take a good month at least to abate all the asbestos in the first floor, and no renovation work can begin until all the asbestos is gone. So we're trying to get them here as soon as possible.
So are we going to have to relocate some of those staff during that time? And if so, where will they be relocated to?
Yeah, so we're moving most of the staff to the River Depot on second floor. That'll be where most of first and second floor go. There's not room there for everybody. So engineering's planning on moving down to 1010 Gateway if we can get that area renovated. If not, we got some other areas we can look at.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, by the middle of October, everybody's going to be moved out of City Hall.
Yeah, so we have, one moving company has submitted a quote to get everything moved over, looking at that second or third week of October. And there's a, another moving company that'll be coming in to get us...
Oh, yeah, he played the saxophone.
What was your question, Mark? I couldn't hear you down here, the mics aren't on anymore.
The guitar player that had the infomercials back in the day.
Esteban.
Esteban.
There you go.
Sorry, I watched the infomercials when I was a teenager a lot.
That's, that's pretty good.
That's not good.
Fat? Was he trying to bring it back up?
No, those aren't loud enough.
Oh.
Testing one, two. All right. Where were we?
And Phil, you'll say we went on a break.
We're still on hold.
Because we lost the power.
Swing it back to Esteban.
I feel like you all need to watch some Esteban now.
Kenny G, I knew, I don't know who they're talking about.
Biggest question is, are lawyers still on the phone?
Christine, are you still there?
He could have hung up the phone. Did he hang up the phone, too?
It's a possibility, because it is... Okay.
We're on YouTube right now?
Yeah.
It's still, still live?
Still streaming.
All right.
So they get a real show. Our highest ratings yet.
Searches for Esteban just went up huge.
At least 100%.
Esteban trending.
Yeah, really.
And, and I don't think anybody's going to be sad about that. He was a quality guitar player.
He was, very good, very good guitar player.
And Kenny G was really good.
Kenny G was a good saxophonist.
I'm not going to put Esteban or Kenny G in our minutes, I'm sorry. I'm not going in there.
Yeah, don't speak of him in past tense, he's still alive.
Good, okay, all right, now, where was I? Oh, so we have another moving company coming in to give us an estimate on that, and if they can work the same timeframe. But then the thought is that we'd look to move, as was mentioned, first and second floor. Kind of got mapped out in the depot where we'd work. Most of it's set up with offices. It's getting cleaned up and trying to get everything set up there. Then working in the asbestos abatement and, depending how the item on the agenda goes later tonight, the construction work in this building.
Yeah, I'd imagine if the improvements don't pass, we'll just, we won't do any of the abatement work either. Don't make much sense.
Yeah, I mean, not if we're having to move out and everything, then, yeah.
And just confirming, I heard you say that the asbestos on the first floor, are we doing the second and third also?
Right now, it's in the plans to remove... Right now, it's in the plans to remove second and third floor as well. We'd have to change order, the finish work into the contract, because right now, we don't have finish work for second or third floor, or for third floor in the contract. So there'll be a little additional cost for that. If we don't, it's in good condition, the tile's sound, it's not flaking off, it's not peeling up. The contractor could drill through it and leave it in place, and then we wait until we renovate those rooms before we remove that asbestos. So the tile could stay on second and third floor if council chooses to do that, or chooses not to award that part of the contract.
But it would, would it be less expensive, though, while they're there doing the first floor, just to go ahead and do the whole building and have it done?
Probably. Like I said, in tile form, it's not dangerous. It's just that the contractor's gonna have to drill through it. We figure, well, if they're gonna drill through it, we might as well just remove it in the first place, and just get rid of it if we know it's there. Because they will have to do some additional measures to install the new heating and cooling system if there's asbestos tile on the way.
Does council have any other questions or comments for Phil?
I would just say, just my own personal opinion. This goes back to the kicking the can down the road thing. It makes absolutely no sense to, while we have the construction workers staged here now, to not go ahead and take that stuff out, as opposed to waiting five years or 10 years to have them take it out, and it costs the taxpayers exponentially more money than it would if we just had them do it while they were here now.
I agree.
I would agree with that. So just to confirm, this is just for the original, original first floor, correct?
No, this amount, I included, well, I included second floor on this. We got the testing back a little late for third floor, so I didn't have that number in here. But it's not a whole lot extra on third floor, that's what we, that we didn't know about before. But yeah, we searched high and low, trying to find every bit that was in here, and I hope we found it all.
I see they came back two or three times to test the different areas.
Yeah, every time we, and it was real confusing stuff. You'd have asbestos-containing drywall behind new drywall, and then a tile, you know, ceiling tiles above ceiling tile. So we'd test the room that was negative, and then other spots would be positive, and trying to figure out where that all went. We found out they just drywalled over the old asbestos-containing drywall, so we had to remove ceiling tiles and pull up carpet and find out where this all, all is at now. Apparently, in the 1960s, asbestos was the best thing since sliced bread, it's in everything, so.
But I would agree with Councilperson Rowe that if we're gonna have someone, and we're doing first and second floor, and it's not going to, and we know it's on third, like you said, I think you said a change order would need to occur for that if we approved this today, but I think that we should.
Yeah, change order to the improvements project would, would be involved in that, yeah.
I think that would be important, and just get it out so we don't continue to have drywall on top of drywall with asbestos behind it, so.
Right.
But I guess it's in the floor, so there wouldn't be drywall.
It's in the walls too. Not your walls, though, so you're, you're good.
Any other questions or comments from council? Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to ask any questions? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Resolution number 146, 2023, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the asbestos abatement City Hall, Atomoa, Iowa project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 146, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have no ordinances tonight, and we have no departmental reports, so we'll move to resolutions.
Resolution number 107, 2023, approving change order number one, and accepting the work as final and complete, and approving the final pay request for the Troger Parking Lot Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 107, 2023.
Phil, I believe you're gonna take this?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor.
I need a motion and a second.
No, I'm sorry.
Who the recommendation is presented?
Second.
Chris will take the, we'll wait till after.
Now, Phil.
That's right. All right, Phil.
Thank you. So this is for the parking lot that's across the street from Bridgeview, where the old horseshoe pits were. Parking lot's done, our crews painted it. There is a change order. We repaved the, the beach parking lot road from Church Street out to the entrance to the, the new parking lot. Still waiting on lights, but that's something that the city's responsible for. They've been on order for two or three months now. When they come in, our electricians will install the lights. So that's not part of the contract. It's, this added 136 parking spaces.
Council have any questions?
Not about the contract, but you mentioned the lights. Do you have a timeframe on those lights yet?
I'm hoping by October they get here, but I'm not putting a timeframe on then, yeah. Seems everything's taking longer than it seems like it should.
I'm in that kind of business, I understand.
Any other comments, questions?
Just for those listening in, in the audience, so what is the increase to the final amount?
So that was for the, the road, so like the parking lot doesn't connect directly to Church Street. It connects to the, the road that goes around back to the, the beach. And so we repaved the entrance from Church Street to the entrance of the parking lot. So there's an extra, I wanna say like 400 square yards of paving right there. I think slightly more than that, but there was a, a bad birdbath there in the park. We widened the.
Bad what?
Birdbath, there's a, it held water. And then we widened up the road a little bit, because people seem to be tracking off of it. I thought it would be a good time to do that, since we had a contractor right there.
So we increased the final contract sum by about 44,000, 45, 44,480?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
It does.
Thank you.
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Resolution number 135, 2023, awarding the contract for City Hall Renovations Rebid Project to RG Construction in the amount of $3,782,232. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 135, 2023.
Who the recommendation is presented?
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you. So this is the project to renovate first floor of City Hall and to install a new heating and cooling system throughout the building. The boiler's been here since 1956. It's been repaired numerous times, and I think we gotta, I think it's on its last leg. It needs some repairs, but we might be able to keep it running. But it, the boiler needs to get fixed, it's, it's on its last leg. The HVAC system is undersized. There's window air, window units throughout the City Hall trying to supplement it. The first floor remodel, it's intended to kind of restore the original look and feel of the building. It'll help redefine the original public corridor around the, around the outside, and kind of address some code violation, or some code improvements for, for fire codes, making, I believe they call them, not egress areas, but.
Area of refuge?
Area of refuge, there you go, thank you. And then it'll also help, I think reorganize the first floor to better accommodate our workers. For this rebid, we, we removed anything that wasn't necessary to the first floor remodel. The number of zones, we reduced those to, to help with that cost. Notice the project was posted, we had two bids from RG Construction and Krishner, and RG Construction was the low bidder. It came in at seven, or $3,782,232. Like I said, we really believe this is necessary, because the heating system won't last. So that, that, that probably has to be done.
Does council have any questions, comments?
No question. I just want to say that I was involved in this RFP process when this first became a conversation topic a few years ago at this point. And I'm really glad to see we're finally here, and finally to the point of tearing walls out and stuff. It's, it's good to be there.
I would agree with that. Phil, Administrator Rath, I just, can you just remind us of where the funds for this project will be coming from?
Yeah, so we had, the first $700,000 was part of the 2022 bond, and then we had the ARPA dollars, so it was $800,000, $900,000 from the first year, and $1.3 million and change from year two. We were estimating franchise fees from the first half of the year, about $660,000. And then the, the balance, the difference that we had here was just over $290,000, and we're looking at that from a general fund. So we have a couple of positions that we had budgeted for this year that either haven't been filled, or we're looking to not necessarily fill this year. And some investment income that was higher than what we had budgeted, so that would make up. We're estimating, there's about $315,000 between the investment income and positions that haven't been filled yet, or we wouldn't fill this year. And those, we're talking about a maintenance manager, which we haven't had, that'd be a new position. The planner, we're looking at, not, we were gonna have that for half of the year, just not filling it this year, especially because we'll be out of the building for that period of time. And then there was some of the positions in engineering that haven't been filled yet, that we're still actively looking to, but for this part of the year, public information officer from July 1 to this point, positions like that, that just haven't been filled. That makes up about 315, which is over the, the 290 we're estimating here.
So just to clarify, the positions that you just mentioned, the maintenance man, manager, the planner, a few engineers, the PIO, the Public Information Officer, it wasn't that we, like for engineering, we weren't, we were still actively trying to hire, but we weren't, we, we haven't, so that's kind of where some of the funds is. It wasn't that we didn't hire those positions because of this, it was more.
Correct, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, the funding. So since those positions, we're actively recruiting, they haven't been filled yet. So anything from July 1 to date is dollars saved, looking at using those dollars towards that. Dispatch has a position that is not filled, they're not fully staffed yet as well. So there's, you know, those positions, we're finalizing the recruitment process for the Public Information Officer that is going to, it's a civil service position that'll go next Wednesday, the 27th, before civil service, and come before the council, most likely on October 3rd. So we're looking to still fill that position. I've got about $15,000 of a wage that hasn't been funded to this point, or by the time that's hired. So yeah, we're still looking to hire those positions, IT tech. The planner, we look to hold off for this year, maintenance manager. The rest of them could still be hired, yet this year, we're, they're in the process for recruiting.
Perfect, thank you for that clarification.
I guess my question is, you mentioned the boiler was on its last leg, so are we looking to fix it or replace it?
So the boiler's being replaced, or it's a steam boiler. They're replacing it with a hot water system, which is a lot more responsive, whereas a steam is, it's just blast you with heat, or it's off. A hot water system, it's a lot more gentle heat, so it can control the temperature better. And then the cooling system's being changed to a VRF, it's a refrigerant, refrigerant flow, so it allows for zone control within the building. Right now, we have one thermostat for heating in the whole building.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 138, 2023, authorize the mayor to sign the letter of engagement with Bergen KDV LTD for audit services for the city of Atomoa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 138, 2023.
Move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Waseem Nasser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Council. Resolution 104, 2023, was passed and adopted on June 30, June 20th, 2023, to approve RFP for the financial audit. Current resolution is to have Mr. Mayor sign the engagement letter for the fiscal 2023 financial add, let audit. The engagement letter is with Bergen KDV Limited, the sole bidder for the RFP.
Any questions or comments from council?
Couple of questions. How many, how many audit firms were the RFP sent to?
It was open, hard, I'm not quite sure how many, it was not sent individually. It was just posted, and then they, they bid it on it.
Okay, so there was no local interest then, obviously, for, for those services. Another question, when do they anticipate, is it December that they anticipate coming here for the audit engagement for the last fiscal cycle?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Resolution number 143, 2023, approve resolution authorizing leadership training for city leaders. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 143, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, our HR Director, Barb Kojo.
Thank you. This is an addition to the training that we had brought to you guys last year. This is our leadership training that we contracted with David Harris out of Florida to conduct with our management team. Feedback was very good from that training. From that training, we have developed our city's core values, which are posted on our website. We have them in every department, they're downstairs here in City Hall. It's allowed for greater conversations about those values, and holding our employees to that, and being able to live up to those every day. With this too, we've also heard feedback from staff that they've taken things that they've learned from this training, and actually been able to implement this in everyday business, having difficult conversations, or resolution, dispute resolutions, different things like that, that they've found a lot of value in. So what we are proposing to do is to offer this training again for calendar year 24. This will encompass both FY '24 budget and FY '25 budget. We did budget, we did allow for, I think it was up to $28,000 for this training for FY '24, which would cover the first two sessions, and then we would budget again for the same for FY '25. The, there would be three different sessions that would, or five different sessions that would be offered, three different types of them. In February, we would look at a three-day non-supervisory training that would allow up to 20 employees to attend this. Some of the feedback that we had gotten while we were in the training was that while our leaders really got a lot out of this, they really did feel that some of our employees could really get a lot out of the first six modules. And so that's what that three-day training is, is it's those first six modules about managing conflict, setting expectations, having those conversations as well. And then we would do three different two-day refreshers. So anyone that had taken the week-long training before, the two-day refresher is a one-day refresher, kind of revisiting our values, having more of those conversations. The second day is a actual role-play for difficult conversations, allowing us, again, as leaders, when we do have conflict, or having to have some of those difficult conversations with our employees, this would allow us practice for those. And then in October of next year, not this year, but next year, we would do a five-day supervisory session, which is the one that was approved previously, where we would have any of our new supervisors go through that class, and any other high potentials that we have.
Council have any questions or comments?
I have a statement. I appreciate that we're continuing to train our employees, and that I truly appreciate the non-supervisory training. I think that. and that I truly appreciate the non-supervisory training. I think that that's important for our staff to have, and I hope to see, as we continue to develop, have more of those for our staff too.
On the non-supervisory, you said there's only going to be 20, or 20 slots open. Is there a potential that if we have more interest in that, we will be able to allow more than 20 of them to take that class?
Yeah, what we would do is, if we get the feedback that, you know, there are more people that would like to attend those, what I would like to do is, I would like to continue this relationship with David. We've all gotten a lot out of the trainings, and there's a lot of other trainings that he also puts on. And so as we continue kind of this learning journey with him, that's absolutely something that I would like to continue that relationship with and be able to offer this for years to come for all of our employees.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
I also would hope that as we get supervisors caught up on evaluations and that kind of thing, that in the future, they would put in those evaluations, training plans for every employee on what kind of training the supervisor would like them to take that next year, and that, like you said, eventually blends some of this into that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments from counsel? I think this has been a really good thing, because it's my understanding that the city of Atumwa hadn't had any, or hardly any supervisor training for many, many years. So I really appreciate Barb's commitment to try and get this off the ground. I know Phil was involved in that discussion as well. So I think it's a step in the right direction, and I really applaud what you're trying to do to get all of our supervisors some solid, basic supervisory training, and then be able to offer additional trainings for non-supervisory staff. So thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passed.
Resolution number 147, 2023, approving purchase of equipment and services from Howden Incorporated for the Water Pollution Control Facility Aeration System Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 147, 2023.
Move recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil, you're up again.
Thank you. So as a little refresher, the Water Pollution Control Aeration Project is going to modify the existing blowers in order to better align with the current aeration needs. It'll also install some automation equipment so that the aeration rate is raised or lowered as the demand increases or decreases. It prevents over aeration and under aeration as well. Now, this particular contract is to Howden Incorporated. They're the company who manufactured the blowers that were installed back in 2007. The attached contract provides for Howden to retrofit new impellers, service the blowers, integrate new sensors and valves into the control panels. Now, Howden is a sole source provider for all these services. Another procurement contract is being prepared for needed valves and sensors that can be installed onto the VLRs. The reason we're procuring these ahead of time and not with the installation contract is Howden told us there's a 30 to 40-week lead time from the time we approve the, the purchase contract to get them. And we think that it makes sense to let a installation contract closer to when those parts are going to get here and not have to make a contractor estimate what their labor cost or schedule is going to be 40 weeks from now. The contract is for $227,921. We budgeted $232,000 into these line items when we first budgeted the contract. The full amount that we had budgeted for is $632,000, so taking into account the engineering contract, which we already was approved, we have $323,977 remaining in the budget for further equipment procurement and installation of the piping and sensors.
Does counsel have any questions or comments for Phil? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Resolution number 148, 2023, adopting the 2023 Downtown Strategic Vision Report. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 148, 2023.
Move recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Zach Simonson, our community development director, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. I've got some slides here for this one, if that's working. The Downtown Strategic Vision Report is something that was one of the deliverables in our partnership with Retail Strategies, in addition to focusing on recruiting national retail and retail for Quincy, Venture Drive, some of those other areas where we have the big box stores and that sort of thing. We also wanted to focus on the health and vitality of retail downtown. And that was what this report is meant to do. Before I get into the report too deep, I do want to give a quick update on where we are with our partnership on retail strategies. They are the firm that does our retail recruiting. We're just about finished with the first year of working with them. It was the second meeting in September last year when we approved that relationship. It's a program that costs $160,000 over three years. Legacy Foundation is contributing $60,000 to that, so it's about $100,000 over three years for that program. In the, in this first year, we've had a couple of successes with new retail coming into Atumwa, including the Five Below and TJ Maxx, which are opening soon. We've also had some setbacks. We had O'Hara Hardware close, close to downtown. We also have the North High East store. And so we do keep close contact with Retail Strategies and the folks that work with us there, providing feedback on the ground from us and leads, ideas that we have, and they share back, and they continue to present vacancies in Atumwa to brokers and retailers for filling those spaces, both directly, they call and talk to brokers every day, but also at International Council Shopping Center, ICSC, industry events in Chicago, Dallas, and Vegas every year. We also have completed the gap analysis for the citywide retail trade area and allowed us to target the needed areas. And the relationship we have with them means that they don't go and recruit things that we tell them we don't have a demonstrated need for. They can go out and they can find vape shops to fill every vacancy in town, because there's a lot of people that want to open vape shops, but that's not a priority on the planning side for the city. And so we ask them to go deeper and to push the things that we see in the data and from feedback from residents that we want to fill. Switching to downtown, though, the Downtown Strategic Vision, the entire report was in your council packet, and it starts by identifying a trade area. And we did a lot of different things to get to our trade area. Our broad retail trade area for our big box stores and that sort of thing is even bigger maybe than downtown's trade area right now. We know that there's over 100,000 people, 133,000 people who shop at Atumwa's Walmart every year. Several of them, maybe as many as 60, 80,000, it's their regular Walmart. They make multiple trips every year. But for downtown, that trade area is at least 43,000. We show a boundary there of people who visit downtown Atumwa very frequently throughout the year to do dining, to do retail shopping, the things that we have downtown, as well as folks who work downtown and live downtown. And so that's the urban area boundary, or the trade area boundary that we identified for this study, and we pulled some data about the characteristics of the folks in that trade area. They align pretty similar with the demographics we have throughout the community in terms of income, educational attainment, where they fall into the Esri Tapestry segments that short, sort of try to profile different spending habits and tendencies among families. And then the plan takes that data, and it also takes feedback from some events that we've had, and generates some actions that we can take to improve economic vitality downtown. There's a couple of things that are unique about this. This is not supposed to be the plan that tells us everything about downtown. We already have a lot of planning efforts that we've done downtown, where there's been some great ideas, there's really good action already happening downtown. This is supposed to be from the real estate perspective, from folks who spend every day working on generating commercial real estate leads, filling commercial real estate vacancies, what are changes that we can take that would make the real estate more attractive. There's all kinds of other things that we want to do downtown around quality of life and our other goals, but this is specifically about how to fill vacancies. And that's sort of what's unique about this approach. It's also going to take our downtown revitalization to the next step. I think that we've done a really good job as a city, getting the buildings in good shape, the roofs, the facades, the streetscape, everything that makes it an attractive place to be. But we have to make it an attractive place to do things as well, and that's where the retail shops come in, restaurants, all that. And sort of taking a cue from our other plans, the parks plan, the housing study, and then of course, the comprehensive plan, we did ask for specific actions to be recommended, and then identifying who would be responsible, a timeframe, and at least trying to set which of those are a higher priority. And that is something that's included, that implementation matrix alongside with the plan as well. And so we did start this process with a strategic visioning workshop, January 19 of this year, that had folks from Retail Strategies come down to Atumwa. They took a tour of the broader community and then really focused on downtown and Church Street, walked all those streets, looked at all those buildings, took notes about the vacancies, the condition. And then we had a stakeholder meeting with city staff, Main Street, GoPip, Legacy Foundation, and some other folks in that room. The study does measure walkability is another piece of data that we look at. Church, or sorry, Main Street District, the downtown area scored higher on walkability even than I was expecting. It scored an 80. This is out of 100, and a score over 65 is pretty good. 80 would indicate that most of your errands could be accomplished on foot downtown. It has proximity to services, it has good connectivity. To get above an 80, we would need to be looking at either recruiting more core services to downtown. We already have a lot, we already have medical, we have dining, we have grocery, we have health, I already said that. But an 80 is a really solid score. We'd also want to look at things like bike lanes and other types of mobility. Church Street didn't score quite as high, it scored 59. I think that's because first, you're getting away from some of the more core services that you have downtown. It is not walkable to River Hills like downtown is, and that's something that would score heavily. And then also, without as many crosswalks on Church Street, I think there's going to be an impact there as well. And now I want to get into some of the recommendations, and I'll try to go quickly through them. The study does look at quite a few things and makes several recommendations, but it tries to focus on four focus areas. The first is the path to redevelopment, and it does ask the city to look at a few things about our processes. It acknowledges that we have a really strong incentive program. I think we have one of the better downtown incentive programs in the state, but it says that we should do more training and promotion of those opportunities so that every business owner understands, and prospective business owner understands, and make, an opportunity to encourage them. So over the last two years, later this month and then last year, we did promote on city, or speak on city incentives to the Main Street Atumwa Business Builder Academy, and those sorts of entrepreneur settings, I think would be good for continuing to move that. It also recommends that we add more teeth to our commercial property maintenance program, and that we adopt vacancy registration and some sort of way of tracking our vacancy and also discouraging vacancy on sort of the, I think of us as having kind of a carrot and a stick. It says we should use the stick a little bit as well on vacancy and not just promise money and incentives and things like that. So, and then it also says that we should do a better job of being consistent and forcing our downtown design standards and look at ways to make them a little tougher. There's some things that are in the code you must do, and there are other things where it says, you know, you should look at the downtown design standards, and then we kind of force people to at least give an explanation, but then not really necessarily follow them all the time. There's some things that it calls out about signage and things, it gives some examples downtown where we haven't done the best job on, on those in the past. It also talks about economic impact for measuring vacancy, and that's an example there on the slide. If you have a, in this case, 1,500 square foot downtown building, it breaks down all the things that you lose when that retail space goes vacant, including $20,000 in sales tax, significant amount of property tax, uncollected rent, and then all these other professional services that attorneys, advertisers, accountants in the community would provide, they're all losing the opportunity to provide those to that business as well. So it provides an overall economic impact, and it really does get significant, and it helps you understand what just one business would, would mean for the district and the broader community. It also recommends electric vehicle charging stations. They are a growing segment in the auto industry, and encouraging folks to stop and charge their vehicle downtown is a way to get folks to come downtown. It also highlights some grant opportunities that are available with DOT, and I think the Volkswagen settlement still has some money out there as well. An electric vehicle charging station at that Level 2, or the DC fast charging station can be as low as $10,000, and there is an opportunity to generate revenue from the folks that are paying to use that station as well. The second focus area is vibrancy, and it looks at connectivity across physical, visual, and promotional connectivity. It does highlight that we could improve the physical connectivity downtown in Church Street with bike lanes, better crosswalks, completing our trail system, these sorts of things. Visual connectivity emphasizes wayfinding, and there's some information on wayfinding signage later that we're excited about. And then promotional connectivity, taking what's happening downtown and connecting it to other events throughout the community, and encouraging some synchronicity and connection there. Some of the short-term strategies that it recommends for vacant storefronts, ways of making these spaces that look a little bit dead have more life, listing posters, something in the window that makes it really clear that this is not an empty, dead space, this is a space waiting to be revitalized, it's available, this is what the rent is, this is where you can find pictures of the current condition, those sorts of things, on a really simple format that people can walk by and read. Window painting, attractive window displays, gallery displays, those sorts of things. Also looks at different ideas for intersection treatments, from paint to concrete, paint on the intersections and paint on the crosswalks. All of those is ideas that they pull from other communities that could make some of these areas more exciting and interesting to spend time. Focus area three is experience, and this focuses on place branding. And a quote that I pulled out that I thought was really interesting, that I think everyone can agree with, is that perception of downtown hasn't caught up with the improvements that we have made. And so we can tell the story of downtown in a way that's going to reverse some of those feelings that people have about downtown. And it talks about place branding through organic image, which is what's there plain to everyone. When they go downtown, they see, if we aren't keeping downtown clean, then we're not starting with a good organic image. So it talks about keeping downtown clean, making sure that we're having a good relationship with local media, and that they have a positive image of downtown, those sorts of things. And then there's the marketing-induced image, the things that we're spending money to put out a message about. And it says the most important thing we need to do there is find out what our core identity is downtown, and our core identity Church Street. They're probably different, and we need to find the thing that makes it unique, makes it us. And I think that's going to be a fun challenge to work through in how we brand downtown. This is an example that they get really deep in as a case study in the plan with Starkville, Mississippi. Retail Strategies is based out of the South, a lot of their examples come from the South, but Starkville's a good one. They brand themselves as Mississippi's college town, and a lot of their things connect back to the university, connect back to game day, the things that make downtown Starkville unique. And then the experiential image is when people come and experience that story. They get to do, we advertise the brand, downtown Atumwa is whatever it is, they come and live it being that. And so how we can connect all of our events in some way or another to what it is that we want to tell a story about in our marketing. Also, wayfinding signage is important here, reinforcing the brand by not having clutter of, you know, different things to tell you where to go. It's a consolidated program. In this case, these are the wayfinding signs that we already have in the works. They're color-coded according to what they're pointing toward, but they all fit that same format. They've got the Atumwa branding, and it goes from there. Some of those signs will come up still this year, and we'll be continuing to put them up next year. They're also important for helping the public and especially visitors find the royal around. And I think that our signs do a good job of this, and what's important about wayfinding as well, is that we think about in placing the signs, and we think about the scale, making them useful for pedestrians as well as motorists. And that's a conscious decision that we have to make when we use these wayfinding signs, so that they cross that point where you park your car and get out and walk. It also talks quite a bit about different ideas for public art. I think that we do need to do a good job of bringing art, as we have downtown, into Church Street, and identify some things that we could do that we don't do yet. We do need to have a really good selfie wall or photo opportunity that is something that people really interact with and take photos. We can do more of things like murals, we can do small-scale or things that we acknowledge are temporary. that we acknowledge are temporary. And then it also has some examples around ghost sign restoration and sculptures. Here's some of those examples. There's, I see it as kind of small scale, there's painting those utility boxes. Not a very big investment, not as flashy as the sculptures and things like that, but it does, it does take something that's unattractive and makes it visually interesting. Something that's more temporary is this chalk or temporary paint installation there that the kids interacting with. And then the ghost sign restorations, when you take those signs that are faded on buildings and you bring life back to them. Those are sorts of things that we can look at. Also talks about activating parking lots as social event and commerce spaces by having special events in parking lots, food truck parks, and even looking at opportunities longer term to bring in container retail. I was in Philadelphia last December, and it happened to be the Christmas market in one of their parks, and so they have these stalls with vendors. It's a huge vendor fair. It's beautiful, the way they set it up, and a lot of people are down there all the time, even in the cold. So I think there's some exciting things that we can do by taking our vacant spaces and conducting business out of them with pop-ups, semi-permanent or permanent type things. It also recommends that we work, and I think this would be especially a goal for Main Street, work with businesses on extending their operating hours. A really healthy downtown is about a 20-hour downtown. There's people that do something downtown between 6:00 a.m. and when the bar closes at 2:00 a.m. And I want to see our Main Street, and I want us to work together in finding ways to encourage business owners to take a chance on extending hours, whether that's holding events that encourage them to stay open. We're going to generate traffic to get there, and then we also want to just keep giving that feedback that we did the event, we pushed to get the event attended, and look, people do have interest in coming downtown during those extended hours. Also want to make sure that we share things like job listings and whatever else it is that we can help with owners to grow their staff or their inventory so that they can support those extended hours, because it's not realistic for business owners to be in the business from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. every day, but they could if they had some help, and we want to help our business owners to grow that way in the ways that we're able to. Focus area four, and this is the last one, we're getting close to the end, is activating vacancies. So this study includes a gap analysis specifically downtown, and it targets at least these five areas. I think there's even more, just because there's so much that we can do downtown, but clothing, health and personal care, limited service restaurants, beer, wine, and liquor stores, and specialty food stores are areas that they identified as a gap, and specifically a gap downtown, because these are the types of things that you would expect to have in this kind of retail environment. Limited service restaurant especially, options for lunch downtown, because we have so many people working downtown. We're a little unique in that way from other communities, that our downtown is a place where so many people come to work every day, including a lot of us in this building. And then it does talk about how to understand and generate retail leads, and it breaks them into four categories. And I think this is where, it's worth reading a little bit into the study, because this is where the real estate part is really unique. We can break apart these leads, it talks about existing businesses that are within or near the district. Those are good leads, folks that are either working from home, they're running their business from home, or people who are running a business outside the district, and that we can see as leads that they might come into the district. There's also the emerging entrepreneurs, really enjoy those Business Builder Academy classes that Main Street does, and finding ways of connecting with folks who want to start a business. And then there's the existing local and regional businesses. I don't think I can quite talk about it yet, but there's something coming downtown pretty soon that's really exciting out of Kirksville, and that's exactly what these leads are. These are the people who are in business in similar communities that they could open a second location here in Atumwa. And then of course, there's going out and recruiting for the national chains, which is a whole other kind of circus. In activating vacancies, it also talks about compiling our information in a recruiting document that we can share with leads. We've done a little bit of that. We have a great story map and some other resources that we share for our national leads, for all of our citywide national recruiting that we're doing at Retail Strategies, but we could focus more on that downtown. And then also, it emphasizes focusing on retail-ready real estate, and emphasizes the things that retailers are looking for in a space, and we can communicate these to building owners. Because I think building owners in Atumwa have a tendency to think that the vacancy speaks for itself. The building's available because there's nothing in it, but they need to set, this is what they want for rent, this is what they're willing to do as far as improvements, and this is what they would expect the tenant to do as far as improvements. Those sorts of things are conversations we need to have so that our owners are ready. And then it does talk a little bit about demising walls and how we can be on the code side and on our promotion side, working with building owners, how we can think about dividing up spaces, especially large spaces, to have retail as the right size. And this is an interesting example here. I forget what it's called. It's a little stationary store, and it's just 100 square feet. It's just that little space that you see in the bottom picture, and it's carved out just of that one little storefront. It's an extreme example of making a small space, but those sort of micro retail opportunities are out there for people who can't afford to pay very much rent, who don't need very much space, but do want to go into business. So those are things that we can look at doing as well. And then the last thing, included in the visitor information from a few different key sites, both downtown and on Church Street, some of that data came from Retail Strategies, and some of that we produced with Placer. There's also a timeline that's a history of America's downtowns, which I think is really good reading, and is probably something that we're going to do with future council members as well as part of our bringing people up to speed of what's happening downtown. And then there's a workbook that's just for planning actions that we're going to take on the plan, and it helps to guide whatever group is in charge of working on each one of these steps, helps them to guide through how they're going to get what they're working on done. And I think it's a great resource that's included in the plan as well. That's my part, that's everything that's in the plan. Staff's really happy with it. I think that the main thing to remember about the plan is that it's not meant to replace anything that we're already doing downtown. It's really a celebration of that and connecting what we're doing with the next steps specific to real estate, and that that's really the scope.
Okay, I guess I've got a couple of questions, Zach. One of the things that I've been kind of concerned about is, it seems like some of the vacant buildings downtown, the property owners really don't have adequate funds to really renovate the insides to make them attractive for new retail, new businesses. Have we been able to investigate any opportunities to help those property owners with grants or funds to help renovate the insides of the buildings? Because I don't think the facade improvement program allowed them to go inside.
So we do have the white box program, which allows for interior improvements of unusable, currently unusable, really bad condition, first-floor commercial space. We'll pay up to $10,000 to match up to $10,000 from the building owner for that white box program. That's the incentive we have now. We've also worked on some bigger grant programs. The Challenge Grant through Main Street was used for 307 East Main, that's a one that included some work on the interior and that building. And then we haven't applied for one yet, but I think it'll be a good program for Church Street, is the IEDA Community Catalyst Grant, which is just the non-Main Street version of the Challenge Grant. Those are things that are out there. We also did just launch here in the last few weeks, our restaurant equipment grant is available now, which could do up to $25,000 for installed, permanent, semi-permanent restaurant equipment, so vent hoods, grease interceptors, the things that if you shake a restaurant upside down can't fall out. Those are the things that we'd be interested in possibly supporting for new restaurants downtown.
So how has all that information been shared with all the property owners in downtown Atumwa?
Yeah, I think that that's something that the study does point out that we could do better, and I hope that our Public Information Officer, when that position's hired, will help us to understand how to do a better job of marketing our work. We do try to share things on Facebook. We have had a lot of success in making sure that Main Street Atumwa understands our programs, because Fred's an excellent ambassador. If we can tell somebody who wants to be in business in Atumwa to check in with Fred, that's usually enough to guarantee that they hear about what they need to hear about, which is good. But there's still room to grow for sure on that.
And then the only other question I've got, and I know it's going to sound like a broker record, because I'm not going to quit bringing it up, is what's Retail Strategies doing to try and talk to Target about coming back to Atumwa?
It's a conversation they've had definitely last year.
I can't tell you the thousands, literally thousands of people that have told me if they get one thing in Atumwa, they want Target back in Atumwa. And I think we, as a city, need to do all we can to help make that happen, because the citizens of this community and the surrounding area want Target.
Yeah. And I understand that. I think there's a couple pieces there that we've learned from Retail Strategies in their conversation with Target. The first is that where we are right now, they don't see that anything has changed from their business perspective on whether they would do business in Atumwa. So they need something to catalyze them to look at the market in a new light, and that means that we have to make traction on our other retail recruiting. Since the TJ Maxx came through, it's been really a better environment for Retail Strategies, talking to other brokers and retailers that work in that space, because they want to follow other successful businesses. So we have to do more recruiting to catalyze the really big prizes, like getting Target. And the second is, Target does not see an existing building in Atumwa as a vacancy that suits them. So if we are going to recruit a Target, we're going to have to figure out a shopping center development on a new piece of property that isn't developed now, and that's a challenge for us to identify. And it's worth doing, especially if we can get a Target, but that takes a lot of pieces coming together, because we don't want to just build for the sake of building when we have vacancies too. So it's a hard thing to put together. It's definitely a call to make.
So has Target looked at the Quincy Place Mall?
I don't, I can't tell you for sure they've looked at it, it's been presented to them.
Okay, all right. Okay, those were the only questions I had. Does council have any other questions or comments for Zach?
What's going to happen with North Hy-Vee? Do we know?
So we don't know yet. I'm hearing a lot of rumors all the time. I have no idea which of those are true. There are a couple things we're still waiting to find out. One is that Retail Strategies has been trying to get in touch with the building owner over the last couple of weeks, and has not really gotten an answer on one core question, which is what type of restrictions were put onto that building when Hy-Vee sold it. It's not unusual for a customer like Hy-Vee when they sell that store on a leaseback to put language into that real estate transaction that says a grocery store cannot use that building other than Hy-Vee for the next X number of years. That would obviously be a big restriction on when we go out and try to recruit for that space. So we're trying to figure out that information, and the building owner has not necessarily been proactive about getting help from Retail Strategies, which could mean a number of things. It could mean they already have a good idea for how they're going to fill it. It could mean they're going to be a building owner that's not especially easy to work with. It could mean a lot of things that are too easy to tell, too early to tell.
So Zach, what I hear you saying in regards to the mayor and Target, and for everyone who's listening, that when we support our, like, so TJ Maxx and Five Below, which I'm more excited about, when we support businesses like that and they have good business and successful businesses, then that's going to show bigger box stores like Target that, hey, this may be a viable community. Or when we grow our downtown area and bring businesses and life to those areas too, again, that shows, again, that viability of a store like Target.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's a lot of ways these things are related, and one of the biggest things that any of us can do is spend our money locally as often as we can. And supporting the boxes in Atumwa is still better than buying it online, because it's going to drive some jobs in Atumwa and things like that, but also shopping downtown has a lot of benefits. It even can connect back to the Target thing, because I think of, I wish I could pronounce the name, there's that candle company that won the Business Builders last year, it's the Catholic, I don't know how you pronounce it. They make candles, and they sell those candles through some of those big box stores, Target and things like that, on the e-commerce side. And so even when products are getting purchased that way locally, and those businesses are thriving, and they're able to go onto those e-commerce platforms and spread their market, when we support our local entrepreneurs to do those things, they also, that information all gets back, and it helps to build, or show that there's a demand in Atumwa for products that are consistent with what they're consistent with, so. If that makes sense.
Hundred percent.
Anybody have any other comments or questions? I guess the one thing I'd follow up with what you said, you said Target didn't feel like, I don't remember how you worded it, do we know what that means? Do we know what they're saying when they say that? Because I think we could refute that and build a strong case to show them that maybe their perception of our community isn't accurate.
Do you mind if I take that one?
Sure.
So, one of the things, when you look at these national retailers, they're very data-driven, and they don't, there might be the perception inside any given community that, you know, we want this retailer, or we need this retailer, but the data from, from those retailers that they're looking at is a couple of things. They want specific high-profile locations, which is, leads to what Zach was talking about, and we are compromised in this community in that way. Another thing that they look at is population base within a certain circumference of the area that they're going to be at. And that's, you know, again, we look at, you know, the desire of the community versus what actually is available in the community that sometimes, that's hard, if not impossible, to reconcile. And then the third thing is traffic counts in the area. Several restaurants that we have been talking with over the last several months want a specific number of vehicles that are traveling in front of that particular roadway at any one particular time. Walmart, Target, what the retailers call the golden egg of the retail business, they expect so many tens of thousands of cars at any one time or any one day driving in front of their businesses. And those are complications that, as much as the community of Atumwa is desirous of someplace like Target, we have trouble reconciling those items, because we don't have that population base yet. We don't have that traffic count yet. So I think it goes back to Zach's point that we need to build incrementally to get to those points where we do become desirable to someplace like Target.
And I guess I would add to that. Target has announced plans to open 20 stores in 2023. So that's a pretty competitive field we're competing against. We're going to be competing against really fast-growing communities that are opening their second and third Target, where Target feels the market's tried and true, and we're trying to tell a story of come back someplace you left before. It's a really hard story to tell, and the data is what gets us in the door, and then we still have to tell a story on top of that. Mark and I, when we were at ICSC in Vegas, which was a great show this year, we were able to really have some good conversations with retailers. And I'd like to give an update on the whole retail program sometime. This is really about the downtown plan. But we were able to talk to a couple of folks who were initially not interested. We talked to an extended-stay hotel that was initially, you know, we don't see the market, but the data was enough to get us in the door, and then we told some stories about what our unique drivers are here, why there are people that have extended-stay needs, how those needs are going to change when we redo the Hotel Atumwa. All of those unique storytelling points are things that we can tell, but only when we get in the door. And Retail Strategies helps to get in the door, but getting in the door at Target is a lot harder than getting in some of the other doors.
Yeah, and I don't want to take up our whole meeting tonight discussing Target, but the thing that I don't understand is Walmart goes into every county seat town, and they don't seem to have a problem with that. And when you look at Target, there's no Target store south of Interstate 80 in Iowa, except for Burlington and Council Bluffs. There's nothing clear across the southern part of the state or even into northern Missouri. So I really have a hard time trying to figure out why they don't think there is good business to be made in Atumwa. They were a very profitable store when they were here before. They were not, it wasn't they weren't profitable, maybe they were one of the lower profitable stores, and they had to cut some stores. I think we were the only town in Iowa that lost their Target store.
Well, and I do wonder the extent to which that's also influenced by Target's decision to place their distribution in the northeast part of the state. I think that that probably made south of 80 less attractive, because they do all of their warehousing out of Cedar Falls. So there's a lot of pieces that move there.
Well, I'm glad we're still trying to maybe work on that some though. So any other comments or questions from council?
I would just say one last thing about the downtown plan. One of the things that Main Street heard some of the biggest feedback from that, the Builders Academy, was that not having like the places to move into, you know. So there's the new gym that went outside. They had looked at Main Street first, but there wasn't an appropriate place. Granted, they're also throwing heavy balls onto the ground and that kind of stuff too. But just, I think that's an important area for us to work on too, and I think you mentioned that. So I just, I recognize the importance of that and appreciate that. And hopefully, we with Main Street and the business owners can all work together to be able to have that, because we have a great group coming in. be able to have that, because we have a great group coming into the Business Academy again, and would love to see those businesses go downtown.
Absolutely.
Any other comments, questions for Zach? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Resolution number 150, 2023, approving the purchase of a half-ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck and a one-ton pickup with dump flatbed and snowplow for the water pollution control facility for a total price of $126,985. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 150, 2023.
May the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you. So these trucks are part of the fleet replacement program. The first truck is a half-ton pickup that will replace a 2013 Ford F-150. The old truck is going to be transferred to Parks. The second truck will also replace a 2013 Ford, but a three-quarter ton Ford. We wanted to upgrade to the one-ton because, with the flatbed, because we can use that truck to haul pumps and motors to Des Moines when we have to get them repaired and not have to use a trailer for that. We can also use it when we're pressing, when we swap dump trucks out. Right now, we have a second dump truck that's back in there. We could use this one to back underneath it as the other dump trucks dumping and put it back in there, and not have to use a second dump truck that way, so it'll save us there as well. Both of these bids came back in above what we had budgeted. I think the price of vehicles is just going up. We checked around, and the bids we got were typical. The half-ton, we budgeted 4254, and the bids came back at 47322. The one-ton was at 50,000, and it came back in at 79663. That was mostly because of the dump bed we put on there and the snowplow as well. We have plenty of money in the reserve fund we underspent last year, so we can take the remainder out of the fund balance. I think in the future, we'll have to update what we budget for trucks.
Any comments or questions from council for Phil?
Just one quick question on the one-ton, or did we just miss the mark on that? I mean, the $5,000, that seems pretty reasonable, but man, $29,000 increase in price. He said 50 to 79, is that right?
Yeah, I had to double-check the, the spec on that, or when we budgeted it, but I'm not sure the dump bed was on there when they did that, and that was about a 15 grand on top of that. And we put the, the snowplow on it as well, but the truck we're getting rid of has a snowplow on it. And then, like I said, we can use that dump bed to get rid of a trailer and also not to have to use a second dump truck. So I think it's a good use of the funds.
Any other questions, comments? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Motion passed. This is a time during our city council meeting where I ask if anyone in the, if anyone in the audience would like to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Excuse me. Hearing none, we'll move on. And the only thing that I've got as an announcement is Councilwoman Galloway, Councilwoman Pope, and Councilman Hull, and myself, and Phil will be attending the League of Cities Annual Conference in Cedar Rapids tomorrow through Friday. So we will be up there. Anybody have any other announcements that they'd like to make?
Yep. Just a reminder that if you did not watch last night, there was a public forum for the four people, well, five people that are running for city council. So I would encourage everyone to go onto our YouTube channel and watch that. And a reminder that we have a primary which, to vote is October 10th. And I, yes, so watch the forum and go vote.
And I was just going to say, if you missed Viva Atumwa this weekend, you missed a treat. It was amazing.
Yeah, it really was good.
And then I would say Thursday at, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, 5:30. Okay, 5:30 at Greater Atumwa Park, there'll be the grand opening of the Shower House, so the public is invited to that to tour a brand-new facility.
Phil, do you have anything you want to announce or say?
It was mentioned, but the grand opening for the Cobblestone and Wasota Chop House was yesterday, so that is open Tuesday through Saturday, from, I think, 4:00 to 9:00, 4:00 to 10:00, depending on the day of the week.
Anybody else have any announcements they want to make? Russ?
No, I live a pretty boring life. I don't have anything to announce.
He just did. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Hull?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending our city council meeting tonight. Safe travels home.